It is 6:25 and I'd like to welcome all to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council here on January 8, 2018. Roll call, please.
Jacobson? Finuchin?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Verbeck?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Six present.
Dave Jacobson is in the building and will be here shortly. I have received a notification from Alderman Marquardt. He's just coming off of vacation and will not be with us this evening. So, there will be six Aldermen and the Mayor tonight. I'd like to call our police officer on duty to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Before we move on, I'd like to make one comment regarding the agenda, and that is that we've worked hard over the last several months trying to determine the order of the agenda, if you will. And I realize that many times over the last couple of months, we've had items on our agenda that were way down near the end, and we had a number of people who were waiting to speak to those items. So what we've attempted to do, we're not always going to be perfect on this, but what we're going to try to do is move those items up where we feel there will probably be more public participation. Having said that, we realize that at times we may mix up resolutions and ordinances, but we feel that that is probably a small price to pay to enable those who want to speak to what we have determined might be items that will evoke more public comment than others up closer to the agenda so be it. Item D on the agenda tonight, public hearings, there are none scheduled. Item E, special items or presentations and citizens' comments. Under proudly DeKalb, it's notified that there is nothing, however, I'd like to call attention to something that I think could be proudly DeKalb. I received a letter today from the Camp Power Steering Committee, from the Kishawaki Family YMCA, and the letter was expressing appreciation to Seventh Ward Alderman Tony Favor for his partnering with the DeKalb Police to coordinate the Clays for Camp Power fundraiser for Camp Power program. That was held down south at the Aurora Hunting Club?
Sportsman's Club.
Sportsman's Club. I know I worked a little bit as a volunteer that day and met a lot of people, and through Tony's efforts, I'm told $3,472 was raised in support of the program. I know Gene and Tony did a good job of working together on that. And as this letter says, Tony is a true champion for the children of DeKalb, and the funds he has helped raise will go a long way towards sustaining this Camp Power program. So, on behalf of all of us, Tony, on the city council, we thank you for your efforts. I just want to thank so many of our people up here who are on their city council. They've worked so hard. They work behind the scenes in a number of things and a number of community activities, and I applaud all of you tonight, but especially Tony Favor. Let's give him a hand.[314.83][314.83](Applause). So be nice to me tonight, Tony.[322.33][322.33](Laughter). Okay. Item B, under reports, the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan Task Force. As most of you know, Alderman Bill Finuchin and Alderman Dave Jacobson are council liaisons for the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, and one other or both of you will be making a report tonight. Is that correct?
I think the only update we have at this point is that we do have a meeting scheduled for January?
January 17.
17th at, looking to Aaron, I know he's here, I heard his voice earlier somewhere. Maybe not.
I just thought, it was 6:30 PM. I'm trying to remember the location. At the church?
Westminster.
At Westminster Church, 6:30 PM.
6:30 PM, 17th at Westminster Church.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Dave. No special presentations for tonight. We do have approval of the Mayor's appointments. We are tonight reappointing William "Bill" Electno to the Citizens Environmental Commission for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2019. Bill has been a tried and true member of that environmental commission over the last several years. He formerly chaired that commission, and he saw fit to be reappointed once again. I'd entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded, that we reappoint Bill Electno to the Citizens Environmental Commission. Roll call, please.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you very much. That leaves three vacancies on three separate boards and commissions, and I would hope that maybe we'll be able to fill two, maybe two of those prior or before our next meeting on the 22nd.
What are the two remaining?
The two remaining, there are actually three. I would hope that we're going to have two. Police Pension Board, DeKalb Public Library Board, and the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. Those are the three. And again, as we've said before, if you know of anybody who may be interested in any of those, we do have sort of candidates for all of those so far, but please feel free to contact me. Okay, as you know, we have public participation. At this point, we'd like to invite anyone who would like to speak on an item not listed on our agenda. We have a number of speakers who have indicated that they'd like to speak on some specific items, and we will be happy to get to those first. The first one who would like to speak to public participation under E4 here is Lynn Fizikas. Lynn? And then Bessie, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you had good holidays.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight because I'd like to talk about the warming centers. DeKalb puts out a notification every year about this time about warming centers, and there are none listed for any time after 8:00 or 9:00 PM. So after 8:00 or 9:00 PM, you're basically on your own, although I do understand that if you called the police non-emergency number, they might pick you up and take you to Hope Haven, which kind of makes it ironic that we're always talking about cutting funding for agencies like this. I know that Hope Haven is not the be-all and end-all. Certainly, what I would really like to see is that any public building belonging to the city of DeKalb that has 24-hour availability, you know what I'm talking about, police station, fire stations, that they also have 24-hour availability announced to the public as warming centers. And I anticipate that, you know, a lot of times warming centers, we think about people who are homeless, who would need them. I know I met a friend for lunch a couple of weeks ago downtown, and she told me that she saw somebody sitting in an entryway with a sleeping bag downtown. And so, obviously, I think we could do better by this population and not just kind of leave everything to Hope Haven. That should be part of our policy. That's how I feel as a citizen. I also think that if we were to designate 24-hour warming centers of our public buildings, that we would also start thinking about some things that could happen, like it's very, very cold and we have a massive power outage or something. So I would like to see this talked about and made better in whatever ways possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Yeah, my wife saw, I think she read your blog, and had indicated that to me about the warming centers, and I appreciate that. I would hope that anyone who does have a situation where they would want to go to a warming center would feel free to go to the police station or to a fire station. I think the fact that perhaps we need to just make that more public and more accessible, if you will, in terms of the public information. Gene, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to share some information. We have an arrangement with Hope Haven that as police officers encounter homeless folks on the street, in good weather or bad, but primarily, you know, especially this severe cold weather we've experienced, we make every effort to get them to comply and come with us, as Hope Haven will take anyone at any time when the weather is so bad. So that's been a great partnership for us. And one of the examples Miss Fizikas stated, and maybe one that I'm about to comment on, is an individual who we've had many encounters with as a homeless person, who was actually living in what I would call a gangway or alleyway downtown, who has on multiple occasions refused to go into a shelter. And so I wouldn't want the perception to be that they're left out there without someone trying to intervene, but there are times that people will actually refuse despite the weather conditions, so. And I also know that the warming shelters information has been put out by the Fire Department on a regular basis as well.
Right, I saw that on the website. Eric, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to address the use of public buildings after hours. We'd love to be able to do that, but we don't have them staffed is the problem after hours. Normally, when it's cold out, our people are on calls, just like the police department, and we're not able to, you know, leave people in the building alone by themselves.
Okay. All right. Bessie, you're up. Public participation with no specific item.
Just a smoky score. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
I have one specific item that I wanted to talk about, but in listening to the previous meeting, a couple of things. I do agree with you, Mayor, the agenda is much more together than I have seen it in previous times. I like the way under item G, where the ordinances come first and then the resolutions. It has a lot more order to it, much easier to follow for everyone, for the clerk, for the public. I also, finally, the city's logo is up there where it belongs. It only took four years, but it's there. I'm glad to see that. Wonderful. And I was briefly talking with Tim, and I'll send you some suggestions about, just some thoughts, not suggestions, pardon me, about the garbage survey. If maybe, I know I pay my bill online, if maybe the survey could be done online for those of us who do pay it online, that might be helpful, I don't know. And maybe you might think of maybe negotiating with waste management. They're not the worst on the planet. Maybe instead of going through a whole big process, that might be more economically conducive to our needs. I don't know. Just some thoughts. Okay. And finally, on this little list of tidbits, before I get on to this, I personally want to thank Mark Espy, and please, Tim, pass it along to him. He is one in a million, just phenomenal over the years. He really knows his business, very service-oriented. I have only one complaint. Who's going to take care of the bees when Mark is gone? Because he took care of a bee issue that we had in our church area over there, so he'll know what I'm talking about if you ask him. Wonderful. I wish him the best. I was reading the article about the Protano Auto Parts and the possibility of getting some granting for that, and it kind of brought to mind some things that I have, some ideas that I've had in the back of my mind for a long time for that particular area. Reading the DC story about the Protano Auto Parts site has brought to the forefront a thought that I've been mulling for quite some time regarding the very important South Fourth Street corridor to our city. Stop and think for a moment about the potential of that area. And I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. The Kiwanis Park, Twin Tavern, the Manning Dealership, Lehan Drugs, Flippin' Eggs, several auto servicing businesses, a primary access for Interstate 88 and an entry from the southern part of DeKalb County. This list is mostly established facilities and points of interest, many of which have been anchors in DeKalb for generations. It is an area waiting for a little TLC. There is no need for massive studies. We have the resources to facilitate a plan for that area, given proper coordination of some entities, which I also took the time to list, and I followed proper protocol and sent this to my Alderman, the Mayor, and the neighboring Alderman, and I'll send it to the rest of you also later. Business and landowners, our own EDC, our own Plan Commission, various elected officials from the county, and discussions with residents in the area, to name but a few items and paths that we might want to take. And grants are a wonderful vehicle, and I'll kind of end with this, but it's been my experience that when a grant is applied for, if they see a coordinated effort on the part of several entities, stand a better chance of getting grants. It's just common sense. They'll say, hey, you know, this community really has its act together, they're pulling in all forces, and it'll benefit a broad range of people, of people in the community. So, and I'll pass, you know, I'll pass this along to you, and this is another indication of how an active proactive press
Hi, guys.
can really perpetuate ideas. Because I handed this over to Misty to kind of take a peek at, and she right away had an idea, and she says, you know, it might be a nice idea to think about Protano's as maybe a park area. It's a thought, it's an idea. So it goes to show that proactivity is a good and healthy thing. So, Happy New Year, that's my gift to you for this one.
Thank you, Bessie. I appreciate your comments. You guys from the media back there, do you feel proactive tonight?[1130.01][1130.01](Laughter). Okay. Thank you. Let's move on. Item number, item number F on the, is the consent agenda, and as those of you who, again, are watching at home or attend, you know that our consent agenda is an omnibus vote. They're enacted by one motion. They're not, there will not be separate discussion of these items unless requested by a council member, in which the, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda tonight are as follows. Number one, approval of city council minutes. A, minutes of the special meeting of city council of November 21, 2017. B, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of November 27, 2017. C, minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 27, 2017. D, minutes of the special meeting of the city council of December 4, 2017. E, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of December 11, 2017. And F, minutes of the regular city council meeting of December 11, 2017. Item two under the consent agenda, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through January 8, 2018, in the amount of $5,267,136.36. B, investment and bank balance summary through October 2017. Number three, Resolution 2018-001, adopting an anti-sexual harassment policy. And four, Resolution 2018-002, authorizing payment in excess of $20,000 to governmentjobs.com Inc. for the purpose of renewal of human resources information software subscription in an amount not to exceed $21,047.25. Are there any items that any council members want to be taken off the consent agenda? If not, I would make a motion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and all items listed therein.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
I'd like to just make one comment, if I may, on the consent agenda. When I saw this earlier on, I thought that maybe someone would request that we pull that sexual harassment policy off the agenda and have further discussion on that. We have, as a city of DeKalb, have had a sexual harassment policy. What staff did is simply to take a look at the state mandated dictates that we need to have a sexual harassment policy for the city by the 15th of this month. They have done that, we've taken a look at it, and I think all of us are comfortable by virtue of our vote tonight that we have a good sexual harassment policy here in the city of DeKalb. And I didn't want to make that comment, I thought it was timely. Let's move on to item G, items for separate action. The first item is number one, Ordinance 2017-054, amending Chapter 66 Motor Fuel Tax, and this is the second reading of this ordinance. Our Finance Director, Molly Talkington, will speak to this item initially. Molly?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is the second reading of a $0.02 per gallon local motor fuel tax increase. The funding would go to support street infrastructure. Currently, the funding is included in the FY18 budget with an effective date of March 1st. So on a full annual basis, $0.2 would be $360,000. With a March 1st effective date, it would be $300,000 that we have included as revenue in the current budget. This tax is on the motorists in the city, and a portion of that, if you recall when we talked about it during the first reading, was we have a lot of non-local drivers, so you have, we pick up a lot of people off the interstate with the Oasis, and that is a significant portion of the income we receive for this tax currently. And we also do get like commuter students that pay this tax, so it's not fully on our citizens, and it's really a nexus with the people who are driving on our streets to paying for the street repair. And with that, I would recommend approval of the second reading.
Before we turn it over to any discussion by our city council, we do have several people who would like to speak to this item. The first one is Duane Brown. Duane?
Maybe.
Jerry, do we need a motion for this before we go on?
We would need a motion for that. Thank you, Alderman Finuchin. Would you care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Now, we had that report from Molly. Thank you. Duane?
Duane Brown, Fourth Ward. Harvard University has done a study and concluded that sarcasm makes you smarter, so I guess that makes me a genius.[1489.75][1489.75](Laughter).
A very stable one at that.[1494.01][1494.01](Laughter).
In my own mind, in my head, in my own mind. Some of the staff and some council members believe that an increase in the motor fuel tax is needed to fund and sustain the city's transportation and infrastructure. As infrastructure costs, construction costs have grown and vehicles have become more fuel efficient, the purchasing power of fixed-rate gas taxes has declined. To offset this loss of purchasing power, the staff and some council members want to increase the motor fuel tax by $0.02 per gallon. The problem is that much of the gas tax has been diverted to other projects like the police station. The state of Illinois is also considering a gas tax increase. With so many roads needing repair, Illinois State Senator Dave Seiverson said it's quite likely lawmakers will have to look at raising the gas tax. Because of the elimination of a 20% sales tax credit that was given to wholesalers on unleaded gas containing ethanol, that the cost will be passed along to the consumers, $0.04 to $0.05 per gallon, depending on where you live. What's very frustrating is that normally people believe that when you pay your gas taxes, that money is supposed to go to roads, Seiverson said. But because it is a sales tax, the money goes into the general fund and not for road repairs. Illinois combined federal excise tax, environmental fees, storage tank fees, state sales taxes, including a 6.25% sales tax, and local sales taxes and fees have a combined $0.57 per gallon total tax for everything. The U.S. average is $0.51.73. Motor fuel taxes can be politically unpopular, so think twice before increasing this tax. Along with being unpopular with DeKalb station owners, because Sycamore stations can sell alcohol, this would perpetuate the border effect, people going to Sycamore to purchase gas and diesel fuel. This increase would hurt consumers and slow the local economy, impact vehicle sales, increase carpooling, and cause families to rethink their vacation plans. Cause interstate truckers to bypass the DeKalb Oasis and buy their fuel west of DeKalb, and add to DeKalb's reputation as a high-taxation city. Please reject this increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Our next speaker to address this particular item is Lynn Fizikas. Lynn?
Hi again, Lynn Fizikas, Fourth Ward. A few weeks ago, the city manager mentioned the financial consultants reports, the financial consultant known as, or used to be known as Executive Partners, Inc. They came twice, in 2009 and also 2013. And so I would like to counter the statements that we always, that we try to follow, EPA's recommendations, as they are almost universally respected, and we try to make use of probably the best consultants we ever had for the money, biggest bang for the buck. And so, I went back and I looked over these reports, I haven't read them for a while, and I was really surprised to see that EPA told us, don't raise your sales tax, your home rule sales tax anymore. You're already the highest in the area. And so, that means that we weren't following that recommendation when we were talking about raising the sales tax, but we were specifically warned against that. Now, bringing that to the motor fuel tax, as Duane mentioned, there's been some diversion of the local motor fuel tax, and also really of the state motor fuel tax as well. I went back and I looked at motor fuel tax reports, the actual budgets for the state motor fuel tax. I'm going to try to make that distinction. We've got local, that's been diverted, we've got state motor fuel taxes that in the 90s, they used only for street maintenance and some related engineering costs. and some related engineering costs. That's it. It was a policy, and we did a lot better with street maintenance doing it that way. In 2003, either the law changed then or we found out, the city found out then, that we could charge other things to the motor fuel tax fund. And one was the electricity for the streetlights to the tune of $350,000 a year, and the other was road salt, although I think road salt is a little bit more gray area when it comes to that use. But it all told, taking almost, almost a half a million dollars away from street maintenance. Again, EPI, our financial consultants, they warned against that. They saw that what we were doing, legal as it was, I'm not saying it's illegal at all, it's just poor policy, which is, which can be different. So what we have is, we have EPI telling us, we need to get back to what we were doing before, and that is to protect those motor fuel tax funds. The state motor fuel tax funds should go towards the street maintenance, they said, and to stop using it as kind of a secondary general fund to pay for these commodities. So that's what I would, I would recommend, is before we start raising taxes, that we look at the local motor fuel tax that's going out to the airport and saying, maybe our streets are a higher priority right now, and to look at this motor fuel tax fund that contains our state share and saying, you know what, let's create a policy that says we're going to go back to using that for street maintenance. And then, after that, I think it would be perfectly reasonable to talk about a motor fuel tax, talk about it. So what I'm saying is, I'm not necessarily against a raise. I think there are some things that we should be doing first. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Another person who'd like to speak to this is John Anderson from the 4th Ward. You've got a lot of constituents tonight.
I know. It's going to be a good vote, I can tell.
We've got to keep him on his toes. I had on my old desk in the basement--
John, do you want to identify yourself?
Oh, yeah. John Anderson, 4th Ward.
Thank you.
Yeah. On my old desk in the basement, I got a July 2008 Rockford Register Star printout of gas taxes. So they're higher now. I've heard some of the figures here, and they're a little higher than what I had here. But what's interesting is the fact that Illinois is the third highest in the United States. California and Connecticut are ahead of it, and we're even ahead of New York. That's $0.66, $0.66.5 per gallon, plus the sales tax. The national average is about $0.50. Now, I think it was a few years ago, quite a few years ago, the state relaxed the use of motor fuel, state motor fuel tax, and allowed cities to do like Lynn said, pay the electric bill for the streetlights, buy salt, and, but also, here in DeKalb, they've sent money out to the airport and even made off some payments to the new jail here we got in town. I don't know how they get by with that, but I follow Lynn's idea 100%. This money was designated to be used for repairing the streets, and my God, there's streets in this town here where you spend more time going up and down than you do forward. And we really needed to get them repaired. But I think that's about, I had a lot more stuff written here, but it doesn't have anything to do with, with the gas tax, except for the fact that just how far will $0.2 a gallon in a year's time, will it pave a two-lane road, a mile? I don't know. And I think right now, we just have $0.2 a gallon right now, city tax. I thought, I thought we passed a $0.2 tax for gas a few years back.
I think it's 3.5 total. Yep.
How much?
$3.5.
Oh, $3.5. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, I don't believe there's anybody else in the audience who wants to speak to the motor fuel tax issue. Let's turn it over to our city councilman here. Again, keep in mind that this is the second reading of this particular ordinance. Alderman Fagan.
I figure let's just keep the 4th Ward going here, shall we? I really checked in this, I've had people reach out to me, I've only had four people email me, two for, two against. One actually suggested a $0.2 tax to get something done with the roads. I drove, I wasn't going to mention the city, but as long as Ms. Brown brought up Sycamore, I went through Sycamore, coming in through town today, and then went through DeKalb. And I checked these prices for regular gas, and I've got Sycamore going from the low of $249 to $259, which in between was $2.55. In DeKalb, we actually had two at $2.48, with a high of $2.59, but we also had $2.53 and $2.51. So if you do the averaging, I don't know why it's different. I think it's more of business decisions. Raising the price, raising the tax of $0.2 per gallon, my car takes 15 gallons, that's I don't see it affecting the sales of our gas in town. But I guess what, the more important thing that's been brought up, and it has been brought up on emails also to me, is that diverting the funds, which I don't want to push it back on the previous councils, but that with us being able to talk about budgets and not having 45 to 60 days to have all this thrown at us, that we can actually get this stopped by diverting these funds. And that's about it.
Alderman Fanouken.
Well, I just want a couple of comments if I may. You know, effective, just about a year ago, there was a state constitutional amendment that restricted the use of motor fuel tax transportation purposes only. That's one of the reasons why the gas tax that we had in place to help fund the debt on the police station no longer goes to that purpose. But it does allow for a wide variety of transportation purposes, whether it be the streetlights, whether it be salt, whether it be at the airport, any of a wide variety of transportation uses. And as Pat with numbers just pointed out, the prices in and around town in the community vary so much from station to station, where the $0.2 is not really going to be, I think, that much of an impact. I think the only case it may impact somebody, if you were, had two stations across the street from each other, you might go to the one that's a penny or two cheaper. But that's a rare instance along the borders here in DeKalb and Sycamore. So again, I think that, you know, what we heard very much over the last election cycle was how much we needed to work on roads, and this is a good way to help take a step in that direction. That's all this is, is a step. As Molly pointed out, it's only $300,000 for this year. And no, John, that would not do a mile, two-lane road. We'd be lucky to get a couple of blocks. But I think though, again, it is a step in the right direction with the roads in the shape they are.
Alderman Jacobson.
I, of course, have had several emails. One of them that stood out to me was former Alderman Naylor's email. This was one of his signature efforts on his entire time in his seat in terms of diverting some of those revenues. And I do agree that it's probably something as we go through the budget that has to be a priority. I know for me, I firmly believe that one of the best economic tools and one of the best tools for recruitment of people into a community on that list is certainly good infrastructure and roads are on that infrastructure. People don't want to drive up and down the washboard to get to and from their place. And to those people that do have to do it, it certainly hurts their property values. I mean, there's no doubt about it, when you go down sections of ridge, when you come down other sections, even on the residential streets, it is a, certainly a hassle for the residents that live there. It certainly takes a toll on their cars and is wear and tear on their cars. And if I was looking into a community and had to literally drive down a gravel road in a neighborhood, I probably wouldn't be interested in that neighborhood to purchase property. In reality, again, at $0.2, I don't believe, I've seen the blogs where people say, well, I'm fed up, I'll go to Sycamore and buy my gas. Again, do you want, do you believe that we need to focus on roads? I think is the question we have to ask residents. Do you believe our roads are in a good or even average condition? The answer I get overwhelmingly is no. I think that has to be one of our priorities as a council, because it hasn't been for so long here, and this is a step in the right direction. I do believe we should start looking, when we go through the budget, at taking out some of those different appropriations and different money. We have money in this fund that we could be making an impact of a couple miles of road a year, and we're not right now. This is a step. This is a minor cost that will, again, at $0.30 or $0.40 a week, sometimes less for residents, a cost that will be shared with a lot of outer towners at the Casey Station and the Oasis for certain. Again, if the discussion is, do you want to fund roads? Yes. Obviously, the discussion became, do you want a sales tax increase? My answer was no. The reality is, at $0.2, this would be less than the sales tax increase. We were talking about on owners, and it's fair and across the board for all gas stations. So I just don't believe it's going to drive a whole lot of business elsewhere. When you drive up and down streets, even when there's gas stations on opposing corners, they're very oftentimes a $0.3 or $0.4 difference in those costs, depending on when they got their fuel delivery that week. And never have I driven by one of those two-station corners and seen one full of cars and the other completely empty. You go to the station you're comfortable with, you go to the station that you believe for one reason or another is either the better gas or the gas you like, or more convenient or whatever reason you picked to go, but it's a destination retail. I don't believe someone is going to go out of town and it's going to affect gas sales much, and that's why I think at this point, this is the most appropriate tax to raise if we're going to raise a tax.
Thank you, David. Alderman Noriko.
There is seldom any issue that reaches the heights or the depths of discussion as streets. The condition of the streets is something, you know, when I run into people and if they can get beyond hello, streets is what they'll mention. And I think that an extra $0.2, there are some people who really fixate on the price of gas and will drive further. Now, if they thought about it, they're probably spending in gas what they think that they're saving, depending upon where you live, you know, in DeKalb. I know from the south end of town, for me to drive to Sycamore to save, you know, a couple of cents, I'd use it up. So bottom line, I think it's appropriate, it's necessary that we do something for our streets, and this is a reasonable course.
Alderman Favor.
Most of what I was going to say has already been said. I've received very few emails on this, and the one email I received was similar to Alderman Fagan, who said, you know, why don't we go $0.5 to $0.7? And I thought I was the only one who was looking at fuel prices this week, but I saw a green gas station and a yellow gas station less than a mile apart, and they were $0.15 difference. So depending on when you fill up your car, I think even within the city limits of DeKalb, there's quite a disparity in the price of fuel. So I think, I am in support of this. Again, it's a step, and as we're talking about the future budget, we can talk about where we spend the money and how it gets spent, but I'm in support of this.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, that we approve this ordinance on second reading. Did you have any further comments, Molly?
No.
Roll call.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbeck.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, moving right along, ordinance number 2, Ordinance 2018-001: Amending Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance for a Text Amendment Regarding Projecting Signs. This is the first reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Principal Planner Dan Olson will speak to this item. Dan?
Happy 2018, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment initiated by staff to our unified development ordinance regarding projecting signs in the Central Business District. Public hearing notice was published in the newspaper on November 18th. The hearing was held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 6th. In the UDO, projecting signs are only allowed in the Central Business District. They're defined in the UDO. Of course, it's a projecting sign that projects from the wall of any building on a plane at an angle, not to be confused with a wall sign, which is parallel to the, what the vast majority of signs in the downtown are. So the UDO has restrictions on projecting signs in terms of maximum size, how high they have to be above the sidewalk, how far they can be from the wall, the maximum distance from the wall they can be. It also restricts that projecting signs shall advertise only the name and the nature of the business and not any particular product sold. Gordon Hardware, located on Lincoln Highway, had requested earlier last year that a projecting sign be put up along Lincoln Highway. It's part of their facade work, which they did on the building. Part of that proposed sign included a wrench as part of the bracing of the sign. There was detail provided by the owner that is in your staff report showing that wrench is part of the bracing of the sign. But since products sold are not allowed in projecting signs, they could not go forward. They did get a permit for a sign that took out the wrench and put a regular bracing there. They'd like to come back this year and put that wrench back in. It's kind of a unique design they thought of after the, but if the amendment was approved. For background, it's unclear why the UDO does restrict products sold from projecting signs, but in the UDO, we do have a lot of prohibited signs. Projecting signs are allowed to have characters, cartoons on them, but not any products sold. So it didn't seem reasonable to restrict products sold from projecting signs. So the language proposed that would delete the section in there would read, "The sign shall advertise projecting signs only the name and nature of the business. However, the sign may display a product directly associated with the business. No such product shall violate any other provision of this UDO, nor shall any such product relate to imagery of products of a sexual nature." The commission did hold their hearing on December 6th. As I noted, they recommended approval of 4 to 0, unanimous. We did have one speaker, the owner of Gordon's Hardware, Turk Cioflerity, spoke in favor of the amendment. So we are recommending approval of the ordinance as drafted and also requesting waiver of second reading. I'd also note too, that as time allows this year, we're going to look at overhauling the sign code to make it a little bit easier to understand, and also take a look at things like this, and also to bring it in compliance with a Supreme Court case a few years ago, that we'll have to make the signs content neutral in their administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion on this particular item? Alderman Jacobson.
Again, I would say that should be something, hopefully that becomes more of a priority. We had a discussion almost two years ago about sign issues. They are continuing to hinder us, whether it be the LED signage, whether it be projecting signs, whether it be the cartoon signs, which I know we have one or two downtown. signs, whether it be the cartoon signs, which I know we have one or two downtown. All of those issues that don't seem to make any sense in terms of why we wouldn't have them if they're tasteful and appropriate and represent the business well. Again, it's been an issue continually that we haven't yet addressed, and it's one of the many things in our UDO that are outdated and seem silly. And I think that we should put some effort into cleaning that up and making it more sensical and making it more business friendly. Beyond that, this one specifically, again, the silliness of the rule takes away an otherwise very tasteful sign, an element of that sign, which I think is crazy. So, in this case, obviously, I think it's an easy decision, but I think it should be opened up for the future so that we don't have to have these issues and they don't have to waste our time and they don't have to waste business owners' time in having the discussions with the city.
Thank you. Any further comments? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
It's been requested that we waive a second reading on this. I entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Item number three on tonight's agenda, Resolution 2018-003, authorizing an amendment to the Architectural Improvement Program Funding and Incentive Agreement with the Forge Brew House LLC. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Here to address this issue and explain it to us is Economic Development Planner Jason Mitchnick. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Before you this evening is a resolution that would authorize an amendment to the incentive that was agreed upon last year for the Forge Brew House. On March 27th of last year, the city did approve an architectural improvement program grant for the Forge for improvements located at the property at 216 North Sixth Street, where they had proposed their production facility with a small public tasting room. Initially, when the agreement was drafted, the Forge Brew House was shooting to being open to the public for Corn Fest last year. However, due to some challenges with the buildout of their location in Sycamore at their new restaurant, as well as a rather lengthy period for changing their license with the federal, their federal license with the ATF, which they had to do in order to move their production facility from Sycamore to DeKalb. They have requested that we go back and amend the original agreement. The previous agreement stipulated a six-month deadline for completion of improvements to that property, and the amendment that is drafted before you this evening would extend the deadline out 18 months from the original. So they would give them another six months. Just to provide counsel with an update, they are getting very close. They have moved all of their production equipment to DeKalb and has been installed. They have been granted a conditional improvement of their local liquor license. Once they pass a fire life safety inspection, they'll be able to get a temporary certificate of occupancy, which will allow them to start brewing. They do want to do a couple of test batches since they are changing the water supply from Sycamore to DeKalb. They do want to make sure that they can perfect their recipes so they're similar with the new water source. So they do anticipate that hopefully, once they have made the small changes to the fire life safety that they've had, that they will be able to start production and then shortly thereafter would open their public tasting room. So the last time I talked to them, they're still shooting for February opening. So, if you have any questions, I would entertain them.
So there is a Sycamore taste to that, and there is a DeKalb taste, right? Depending on the water. Okay. Any comments or any comments or questions? Roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item number four, Resolution 2018-004, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $45,000 for the purpose of facilitating community events beginning January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Again, Jason Mitchnick, our Economic Development Planner, will address this item. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first of a few funding agreements before you this evening. This is with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce. Over the past four years, the Chamber has managed several community events that had started off originally with Renew DeKalb. However, when that organization closed its doors, there was a need to facilitate and manage those events. The past administration worked with the Chamber to investigate the cost of managing those houses in, those events in-house versus outsourcing them, and they did find that there would be a cost savings with having that person staffed with the Chamber of Commerce. So that has been the purpose of the funding agreement. Moving forward, in past conversations with both the Economic Development Commission and the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, they've looked at increasing the number of community events to draw visitors to the community as a strategy for increasing economic development. And in past conversations with the Chamber, what we'd like to do, and this is a change to last year's agreement that is new this year, would be to implement a provision that requires them to work with us to kind of identify specific events that they have been managing, that they could transition to other organizations that would allow them to free up time to start new events and build new events, with the idea that we just increase the total number of events through the community. On the second page of the document, there's a list of specific events that I'll go over quickly, that they are agreed to manage through the agreement. The first one is the Breakfast with the Bunny, which takes place in April at Hopkins Park. Memorial Day Parade in the month of May, which is downtown. Farmer's Market from June through September, which is their largest event. And then this South Fourth Street Family Fun Fest during the month of July, which has actually been moved and is just now the, Family Fun Fest is at Hopkins Park. Spooktacular takes place in October, which was incredibly popular this last year, and we had hundreds of kids that came downtown. And then the Holidays/Taste of the Season, which starts at the end of November and through the first weekend in December. And they made a change this past year. They worked with downtown merchants to do a open house and wine tasting that was very successful, which we look to replicate again this next year with potentially some other events, and then also another event to be determined throughout the year. So again, this is, the goal this year is kind of looking at a transition plan and identifying specific events that we might be able to work with either area nonprofits or other organizations such as the Park District to take over those events and then free up the staff time for that person with the Chamber to investigate and then start new events. And with that, I would entertain any questions on the agreement with the Chamber.
Questions or comments on this? That's the same amount as last year?
Correct, it's $45,000.
One thing, I'd just like to make a comment, if I may, before we vote. This sort of ties in also with what we're going to talk about next, and that is the DC, the DeKalb County Visitors and Tourism Bureau. You know, all of these things tie into quality of life in our region. And, you know, what I would hope that we could do, and I know we've had discussions of this, but personally, I have had a number of discussions with the Egyptian Theater, with the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, with Debbie Armstrong at the Tourism Bureau. I've also tried to engage Mike Embry, who was one of our local citizens, and I don't think anybody knows entertainment quite like Mike does. And, you know, I think this is one of those areas with the Arts Council and the Arts Corridor and all that going forward, that we want to continually keep on our radar screen, because I think this could really make a big difference in our community. Not that it hasn't already, but over the next one, two, three, four years, to engage, Bessie used the word collaboration previously tonight, and it's so important in this arena that we have that collaborative spirit. So, thank you, Jason. Roll call, please.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item five, Resolution 2... Okay. You're going to, yeah, Alderman Fagan is recusing himself for these next two items, so he has left the room. Hopefully, he hasn't left the building. Okay. Item number five, Resolution 2018-005, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation in the amount of $45,000 for economic development services beginning January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Again, Jason Mitchnick, got to describe the details of this proposed resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second of the three funding, annual funding resolutions before you this evening. This one has quite a bit more history than the previous one. The history, the partnership between the City of DeKalb and the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation goes back about 30 years now, since 1988. Since its start, the City of DeKalb has provided a minimum of $35,000 towards the operations of the DCEDC, as one of the main partners. The funding request for this year, which was included in the budget discussions that took place at the end of last year, is $45,000, which is the same that it has been for the last several years. And that has been, that's roughly based on the population of the City of DeKalb. It's rounded up slightly from $44,000 to $45,000. Looking at the economic development strategies that we have here in the City of DeKalb, industrial development is one of the main components of economic development, and the DCEDC is our key partner in the recruitment, retention, and expansion of our industrial prospects and businesses. One of the main highlights from this past year was working with the DCEDC on Project New World or Project MIT, which was the Toyota Mazda Assembly Plant that the City of DeKalb did compete for. And while we didn't land the project, I think that the process in itself was incredibly valuable to bring several stakeholders in the community to the table and talk about what are our, what are our key assets. And from that, we'll be able to kind of compile that information and put it into marketing materials, and the next time that prospect does come forward similar to that, we have all that information in one location now, and it'll be much easier, and we'll be able to do that in a very timely fashion. The other component that was added to the agreement this year that is different from the past is that we do call out the DCEDC as the administrator for the countywide enterprise zone. This was established in 2016. So, any applications for the enterprise zone that have come forward in the past year have been going through the DCEDC. They are the designated party to administer that through the state, which they've done so on several of our downtown projects that did qualify for the sales tax abatement on construction materials. Other than that, the provisions in the agreement remain the same from the past year. And if there are any questions, I would entertain those at this time.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Fanukin.
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to say that, you know, DCEDC has helped us quite a bit over the years. One of the recent successful projects was a 3M location on the south side, and they continue to look towards bringing in clients of that type to the city. So this is a very worthwhile contribution to that program.
Thank you, Alderman Fanukin. Any further comments? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item number six, Resolution 2018-006, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $50,000 for tourism activities beginning January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. And once again, Jason Mitchnick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last of the three funding agreements before you this evening. This one is with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. As I mentioned, the components of economic development and the DCEDC's role with industrial. The CBB is our key partner in tourism, which is, I think, one of the fastest-growing areas that a lot of cities are using in their economic development strategies. The CBB is designated with the state, meaning that they do get a grant match from the state, which is based on the funding that they do receive from their municipal partners. The City of DeKalb is the largest contributor and partner with the CBB. The $50,000 request that was included in the budget discussions is the same that it has been for the last several years. So there are no changes in the requested amount, and the provisions in the agreement from last year to this year have not changed. A couple of highlights from this past year. The CBB has worked diligently, and we have seen increase in visitor spending for the last 10 years roughly, from 2009, which was at 65.34 million, to the 2016 numbers, which were at $93.88 million. So that, as I just mentioned, that is one of the areas that we're seeing economic growth. I think that's across the board everywhere. Also, the city did host the IHSA State Football Championships this year, and while those figures haven't been confirmed or finalized yet, we did, we do think that there was an increase from past years. And at the last meeting in 2017, Executive Director Armstrong did provide a great recap of what the CBB did accomplish last year. Another event that I'd like to highlight that the CBB did participate in, although it didn't take place in the city, which was the NCAA Golf Championships that took place at Rich Harvest Farms. They were, they were one of the partners that worked with the State of Illinois Office of Tourism, and they had a great opportunity to highlight a lot of their attractions that took place, that are here in DeKalb at that event. And with that, I would entertain any questions on this agreement.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this particular resolution? Roll call.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, Jason. Moving right along, item number seven, Resolution 2018-007, appropriating the sum of $1,465,000 of motor fuel tax funds for maintaining various streets and highways under the applicable provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, Section 17-00000-00-GM, from January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Patrick Idiana, you're going to address this, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The Illinois Department of Transportation requires municipalities to pass an annual resolution estimating total MFT expenditures for the upcoming year. This year, public work estimates $1,465,000 in MFT expenditures. These include $1 million for street maintenance, $350,000 for electricity, $100,000 for salt, and $15,000 for bridge inspections. All of these estimated MFT expenditures are included in the current CIP. In recent, in past years, MFT funds have been used as a local match to leverage grant funding on many of the current projects. Because of that, we have the ability to increase our MFT expenditures on street maintenance. Moving forward, this is a resolution for estimated MFT expenditures only. And with that being said, if you guys have any questions, please feel free.
Did we have a motion on that yet?
Yes.
We have, okay. Discussion or questions? Alderman Noriko.
Patrick, does that $1 million for streets maintenance include the $300,000 from, okay?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so it would potentially, then, it would actually be more for streets maintenance?
Exactly, exactly.
Very good.
There's funding from TIFs and capital improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Roll call.
Faver?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Faver? Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Number eight, resolution 2018 dash zero zero eight, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter, Inc., and Core and Main in an avail, in an event, in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Motion.
So moved.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Our Assistant Public Works Director, Brian Favor, will address this.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you for your consideration would allow for the purchase of new water meters and radio transmitters. This item is typically brought before council at the start of each fiscal year, as it is expected that the total expenditure will exceed twenty thousand dollars throughout the year. Due to the proprietary nature of the meter, radio transmitters, mobile drive-by reading equipment, and also the billing software, staff is requesting council waive competitive bidding and allow those purchases to be made through two companies, Badger Meter and also Core and Main, which is a distributor of census-type meters. The meters will be used throughout the year for meter replacements, which are typically done every fifteen to twenty years, and also for new construction purposes. In those cases, the water meters, the cost of the water meters are reimbursed through the developer. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Because of the nature of this request, this will require a supermajority, I believe, which in this case would be five votes tonight of the six. Is that correct?
It would be a supermajority of council, yes. And the mayor's vote would be called because it's supermajority vote.
Very good. Ro, Alderman?
No.
Oh, excuse me, Alderman Jacobson. I didn't see you down there.
I've had this question before, and I'll bring it back up again. At what point do we look at exploring smart meters, static meters, that don't need to be read, that we don't have to drive around and take readings, much like Med's doing, much like the Village of Elburn is doing with their water meters? They put up antennas and either transmit the information over the air, or they're, I know the ComEd technology is built more on like a Bluetooth or Wi-Fi type meter system. At what point do we go out to explore those to see where the cost efficiencies can come in and take out the need of people driving around in vans to get water meter readings?
Yeah, and that has been explored. And the meters that we're currently putting in, which are Badger E-Series meters, they're ME radios, which means migratable endpoints. And the migrable is from a drive-by to a fixed base, or as, as you were referring to, a collector on top of a water tower, which would then read those meters. And so the meters that we're currently installing, there's eleven thousand water meters. Of those, about three thousand are now the ME-type radio devices. Obviously, it takes many years, unfortunately, to change out these meters, and we have a lot of capital costs involved with the meters that we currently have installed. So you're talking millions of dollars to change them all out to all ME. So as we are replacing meters, they're, the new radios will be migratable endpoints. With those, what you can do is you can do a drive-by reading system, but if ultimately you want to, you reprogram those remotely. You don't have to physically enter a house to reprogram those, but they would be remotely reprogrammed to be a fixed-base system. And so we are heading that way. It really probably comes down to at what point do we pull the trigger and say it's beneficial for us to expend those capital costs to put in the infrastructure for a fixed-base system, knowing that we are still going to have to read some of those meters by drive-by until such time as those are also changed out. So we are working towards that. I will say our drive-by system is very efficient. We can read the entire route, which is approximately five to six thousand meters, in about a day and a half of drive time. So you also have to weigh the, the balances of spending millions of dollars on switching to a fixed-base system, or something that takes us about a day and a half to read. So there's definitely benefits to a fixed base, but it's not kind of the end-all and do-all that some people might think. But we're, we're working that way. And if nothing else, we're putting ourselves in a position that we'll have that option in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a new business item tonight. Under H1, request for qualifications for engineering services for projects slated for the years 2018 through 2020. Patrick Idiana, again.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Public Works, Public Works plans on releasing a request for qualifications for professional engineering services for city projects slated 2018 through 2020. This RFQ is in accordance, is in accordance with qualific, with the qualification-based selection process as described by IDOT. This QBS process allows a local agency to solicit proposals for upcoming projects, evaluate qualifications in accordance with the selection criteria as defined in our, in our RFQ, and make a selection on a project-by-project basis. Ultimately, our goal is to qualify a pool of engineering firms experienced in the project types mentioned in the memo. Once qualified, we will work with the firms to create a project scope that satisfies our goals and budget. Council will, will still be required to, to approve any contracts as those projects come up. Finally, Public Works would like to add city engineering services to this RFQ before we put it out. Our recent interviews for a permanent city engineer did not produce a qualified candidate. Therefore, by adding the city engineering services, we can begin to accept, assess our next steps and be more than willing to answer any questions.
And I take it this will require a vote of the city council?
On RFPs of this nature, we typically bring them forward and just seek a consensus to move forward. They're not typically approved by vote.
Okay. Does it seem to be consensus as this make, that this makes sense?
Yes, I have a question.
Alderman Noriko.
I don't know if either you or Human Resources Director Randall can answer this question. Do you have any sense of what has caused the difficulty in recruiting a city engineer? Is it salary, or benefits, or location, or job, or boss, or, you know?
So this is the problem that we have been having for, with recruitment for quite a few months, is the job market, it's getting better, unemployment is getting low, which is a good thing. But now it's becoming very hard to recruit qualified candidates. I cannot answer based regarding the residency requirement or any other constraints, because we don't have that information. That position for the city engineer is in the square. Some of the candidates that we received were not as high-qualified as we wanted for the position. And positions such as the trades, as, as the same manner that we had some difficulty in, in recruiting for code compliance, but civil engineer and highly professional positions are being really hard to recruit. So we, the first recruitment was not fruitful, so we advertised once again, and we are hoping for better results.
Okay.
Any other comments? Our options, as I see it, our council can choose to accept the recommendation of staff and release of the RFQ, and that appears to be what it is that there's consensus on. We could direct staff to pursue a different process, which we are not doing. And so I, I sense there is consensus, and thank you very much, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports and communications. Our final item on our regular council agenda this evening. I'd like to start with our first ward, Alderman David Jacobson.
Happy New Year. No other report?
Alderman Fanouken.
Other than Happy New Year, nothing else to report at this time.
Okay. Alderman Markwart is no long, is, is not here with us tonight. He's no longer here with us. He's no longer in the building, right? No, no. Mike is just coming off a vacation. He'll be back here at our next meeting on the twenty-second. He left me no report. Alderman Fagan?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Just Happy New Year, and I think the street department did an excellent job on the snow removal and the ice removal from yesterday.
Alderman Noriko.
And Ward five, we're going to have a meeting on Thursday at 5:00 PM. Once again, the police department is graciously hosting us. This is primarily oriented towards the Elwood District residents, so that they, we make sure that they thoroughly understand the parking proposals that will impact that area, an opportunity for them to ask questions, give feedback. But of course, we welcome any residents, because the chief makes such good coffee.
Alderman Verbeck?
Happy New Year. No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
It's interesting how things happen sometimes. This morning, as I was reading the Chronicle, I saw a short foreign article on the fact that Northwestern was hosting a informational workshop, a full-day workshop, on mental health. And we've heard Chief Lowry and others in our police department state that many, many times, over the, the course of a, a given night, or a week, or a year, many of the cases that our police and fire come up with, especially our police, involve those with, where mental health is involved. That particular workshop, which is going to be held this Friday, will be featuring, will be included in that. Attendance will be three of our police officers, I understand, and that is a sold-out. They had no more room with the thirty people, and they're going to do it again. So I commend the fact that we're going to have three officers there, and I commend this community for continuing to take a look at that entire mental health arena. What, what made this so interesting is shortly after, I think, after I read that in the Chronicle, I got a, an email from Cohen Barnes, who just opened his SunDog IT facility downtown, and he was, he didn't know what to do. He's in a quandary, and I know he's talked to police about this. We have a homeless individual, someone who perhaps has a mental health issue, and someone who has been making a lot of noise and yelling things this morning, and Cohen was perplexed because he's compassionate about prison. The police told him that there's very little that we can do with that individual. We can politely ask him to move, but apparently, he might be living nearby. And so, again, I, I said to Cohen, I said, I'm not gonna, I don't have the answer. I don't know if we have the answer, but it's something that we certainly realize is happening not only there, but within our own community. At the conclusion of last month's meeting, I had, had indicated that I would be meeting over the next several weeks at that time with all of our aldermen. I have accomplished that goal. I've met all seven of our aldermen to, you know, get a report card on one another, what our performance is. Not only report card on their performance, but report card on, on my performance as your mayor. And I think what came out of that is that all of us feel pretty good about where we, as a body, if you will, a city council are going. We have a lot of individual thinkers, different opinions. And so moving forward, I'm very, very, and very heartened and very enthused and very optimistic that this council, working in tandem with our staff and, and our residents, will continue to make, make this a better community in which to live and work and raise our families. And finally, on the twenty-second, our next meeting, we're going to get that started a little bit later, because the committee of the whole will feature my State of the City address, my ideas of where we, where we've been, and where we are, and where we want to go. And that is the official State of the City address, as opposed to the Chamber of Commerce event, which was billed as State of the City. We got some criticism on that, and I've asked the chamber to perhaps name that in the future a commi, a committee report, or a mayoral report. So that will be on the twenty-second of this month. Now, let's go down the row. City Clerk Sue Herman, have you anything to report?
I do not. Thank you for asking, though.
City Attorney Frieders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, over the holiday season, we had a question regarding some of the provisions in our city liquor code relating to the hours for sale of alcohol. Under current liquor code, on Christmas Eve, facilities, everyone other than grocery and drugstores are permitted to be open from 6:00 AM until 7:00 PM, and are required to stop alcohol sales at 7:00 PM. And on Christmas Day, they're permitted to sell between 6:00 AM and noon, and then between 4:00 PM and 1:00 AM the following day. And this is kind of one of those Easter eggs that was discovered in the code. From what I can tell, it has been there for a very long time. We haven't identified any current reason why it would be there. It was causing consternation for some of our local businesses as they became aware of it and didn't want to run afoul of those restrictions. In the research that I've done, I can't find any instance where the city has enforced it. So I wanted to bring that to the council's attention, and in the event that there are members of you who feel that that is no longer necessary component of the code, please let me know, and we'll work that out for a future council meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Anne Marie Gorra?
Thank you very much, Mayor. The main item is to reiterate what we talked about during the fiscal year nineteen budget process, is that January twenty-fourth, we will be holding the goal-setting session with the council. More information will be coming out publicly on that. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager Patty Hoppestedt?
No report. Thank you.
Our Police Chief Gene Lowry?
Mayor, brief comment in regard to mentioning the complaint from Cohen, or the concern from Cohen in regard to the homeless individual. It's unfortunate, but homelessness crosses every demographic. And within that demographic, there still lies the rights of every individual, regardless of where they sleep, or what they have as a possession, or what they don't have, or what their education is. But in this situation, I think it's really a good example to point out why it's so important, and especially moving forward. We now have two candidates that are viable candidates for our mental health coordinator position to address something that's not within the public safety wheelhouse. It's, it's very difficult for the police to force someone into a situation where they certainly have a right to not be there. But hopefully, with this potential grant for a planning year and the expansion of that grant in years to come, we'll have a solution that will make it better for those people who oftentimes are afflicted with some type of behavioral health disorder. So I understand the frustration. We share that as well. On this specific individual, there's certainly been a significant amount of calls for service dedicated to him. And we hope that at the, in the end game is that somehow there's an intervention available that will help his situation become better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Finance Director Molly Talkington?
I just want to say I'm looking forward to our new budget process, so we'll be seeing a lot more of each other this coming year.
Thank you. Our Fire Chief Eric Hicks?
I'm happy to report that although we were very busy throughout the holiday season, we had no holiday-related incidents, so the reef stayed red this year, so.
Wonderful. That's great. Our Community Development Director Joelle in Charlton?
Hi, thanks. Just a couple of things coming up on our meeting agendas in the next couple of months that our department has been working on. We will be seeing TIF, discussions of TIF coming back, and whether or not the council wants to continue seeking and supporting some of the transformational projects in and around our TIF districts, and how we would best accomplish that. around our TIF districts, and how we would best accomplish that. That will be coming up on some agendas in the next couple of months. Also, University Village, many of you may recall that that approval included funding for the provision of support services in University Village. What that agreement didn't do was say how we were going to accomplish that, and what type of service, and who would provide that. So our staff has spent quite a bit of time together with various stakeholders to try and determine how that would best be served in that area, and we hope to bring some of our thoughts forward to you to make sure we're on the right path before we bring something formal to you. Also, per your direction of the council, we did solicit additional grant applications for the social service funding dollars that are available, and we did receive about twice the number of grant applications and twice the amount of funding. So we did go through and evaluate and rank those, and we want to talk to you about the assumptions that we went through, and make sure, again, that we're on the same page in evaluating those and consistent with your goals and objectives. So our intent will be to bring that to you for, under other business, for discussion, so that you can give us some direction and make sure we're on the right path.
Thank you, Joellen. Our Public Works Director, once again, Tim Holman. Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of all the Public Works employees, I want to say thank you for the kind words that were given tonight about the snow and ice operation. I know it means a lot to our guys. They work hard, and to be recognized for that hard work, I know means a lot to them. I would also like to remind people, especially those who have had frozen water services in the past, when we have very cold weather, like we've just gone through, you need to take extra precaution to keep the water from freezing. The best way to do that is to leave a little stream of water running in your faucet, the furthest away from where the water enters your house. Please do not ever use an open flame on your pipes to thaw them. Always use a hairdryer, or heat tape, or something like that. But most of those that we're seeing are ones that have occurred in the past, and people just don't remember to do that. So we're here to remind. Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Our Human Resources Director, Chris Randle.
And continue to thank Public Works employees. I once again want to thank Mark Aspie for all of his dedicated years of service with the city. Dedicated, talented, high-performing individuals such as Mark is what fuels our organization and allow us to provide the best possible service that we can with the resources that we have. And our community deserves employees such as Mark. So I just want to thank him again for all the years of dedicated service. We are all very grateful for his contributions.
Thank you, Chris. Our IT Director, Mark Thorson.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items. We've been having issues with Google regarding our YouTube channel. Our live streaming has been down. We are working with them to try and rectify the situation. Channel 14 is up, so we are definitely broadcasting, and the recording is occurring as normal, but we're running into a problem with the live stream on the YouTube channel. The other thing I'd like to mention is, as people probably have noticed in the news, there's a couple of, a couple of items that came out very recently regarding CPU flaws in computers, phones, laptops, pretty much any computer-type device, your iPhones, your iPads, and so on and so forth. We asked, obviously, I have a, I have a webpage up on the city's website, if you do a search for cyber, or if you go under the IT portion of the website, and you can look at the, there's a cybersecurity information page, and I've listed some information on there, as well as a link to a CNN article that actually goes through and helps explain the flaw much better than I can, and also explains some of the remedies that are available. But just as a general rule, make sure that your devices are up to date. If there's updates for your operating system, like Windows or Mac, make sure you're updating it, because it does affect pretty much any device out there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Before we call for a potential recess for executive session, Bessie Chronopoulos, our former mayor, mentioned the logo on the wall back here, and it does look pretty nifty. I'd also like to just say that this is the best this room has looked in a long time. If you notice, we have the new carpet now. We have, the chairs all look pretty, pretty good here, and so I commend the staff who worked so hard to get this thing looking in pretty good shape. And the fact that we have a proactive media, hey, we're in pretty good shape. Okay. I'd like now to entertain a motion, if the council is so inclined, to recess for executive session. If that is approved, we will go into executive session on number one, approval to hold an executive session to discuss personnel, as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C1. And number two, approval to hold an executive session to discuss purchase or lease of real property, as provided for in five ILCS 120/2C5. I asked the council for a motion to hold an executive session. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes.
We are now in recess. Council will adjourn to the executive conference room.